Session. All set, Sujan? All right, just want to reiterate for anyone who could not hear the taping that on Item C, Discussion by Council vote on other action to adopt municipal immigrant protection ordinance for Rhode Island cities and towns, that motion, we made a motion to not take any action and that passed five to zero. So now we're going to go to Discussion by Council vote on other action on payment of bills. Anyone have any questions for the payment of bills in their packet?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay, so, medical reimbursement, I've been seeing this a few times on, you know, the past, so can you explain how that works? Like, what are we, what are the medical reimbursements, obviously? Healthcare? Why is the town reimbursing individuals for healthcare?
That's just part of the union policy for both.
So is it, so do the individuals carry their own healthcare and then the town reimburses that? Or is it still like a program, it's just rather than being put through payroll on a weekly basis, they get the reimbursement?
You get, so you get, you get the option to have insurance through the town. If you don't have insurance, you get a buyback that ranges between, whether you have family or single, that value ranges. Regardless, if you have the town insurance, you get a $500 buyback for family and 250, or reimbursement, or $250 reimbursement for single. And that's with, that's $500 for the fiscal year, or $250 for the fiscal year. And that can be, you know, you pay something at CVS for a subscription, or that could be a copay that you had to pay at a doctor's office. I'm not sure how far back that policy goes, but that's been here for a little while, at least I know.
That's part of union contracts?
And the appointed staff adopts that as well, but yeah, that's, it's in the contracts, yep.
All right, two more, two more, I think. Santander Bank recycling trash carts for $9,700. Why are we paying Santander for trash carts?
We lease them through, they're the holding company essentially, they're, the trashcans are leased through Santander. So we pay them for the bins. If, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then the last one was $33,000 to Stanley Tree Service for tree removal. Just a little more background, it seems like a significant amount of trees that were removed.
Yeah. I'm not sure where, if Ray wanted to talk about it, but we, we have a contract with Stanley that we use, I don't remember if that was MPA based or if it was municipal based.
So is this like for six months of service or just a big storm?
Good evening, Ray Penney, Director of Public Works. We normally get $50,000 in our budget for tree removal. This year we have 40,000. I'm at the 33,000 mark, I try to save some in case we have some storms for the spring. This has been going on for several years, the trimming of trees, we have a lot of trees in this town, we have a lot of dead trees in this town. So if the trees are on private property, that's the homeowner's responsibility. If the tree is on the edge of the roadway and is over the electrical lines, that's, that's the Rhode Island energies issue and we deal with that with them. But if it's a tree that is not over an electrical line and it's, and it causes an issue into our roadway, we take care of those.
So the $33,000 is like six months' worth of service or something?
Correct.
Oh, so it's not just?
Right, and we may have a couple little here and there, but it's got to be almost an emergency, or basically we're planning, we've been planning for five years on certain areas that we go in and tackle all these things. I'll just use like Ridge Road as an example, there's a million trees on Ridge Road and they're all dying over the street. So when the branches come down and almost hit kids and cars, we have to kind of take care of that. But that's basically what it is.
Okay, that's all I got.
Anyone else have any other questions? Can I just ask about the, the detail expenditure report? So there's some over budgets that, are you just going to kind of?
Yeah, I can go over a few of them that I had seen. So one of them, I hadn't gotten a chance to, like I said last meeting, I haven't gotten a chance to look at the overtime for parks and rec yet. The one that was over for, detail for dispatch overtime, that's just overdue the manning within that department. The, let me find the other one that I had found.
What about professional services and finance?
So that's because I had, so MJ and I had talked about tangibles going out for collection. There was a huge wave. The, obviously MCA is going to chase those people for it, I didn't, that's partially my fault, I didn't expect that as much to come back so quickly.
Yeah.
I expected it to be slower. It's a good and bad thing, we have to pay them, but we do get collected that money back quicker. So that is the majority of the reason why. There is another bill coming in, but I'm going to try and see if I can do a budget transfer to cover that within the department. And then there was the North Smithfield Police Department clothing allowance, that's over by 3,000. That's just an error within one of the payroll postings, I found it a few hours ago, but I'm going to investigate that a little bit more, hopefully tomorrow, fix that. I don't know if there were, I don't think there were any.
I think that's pretty much all of them.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the payment of bills for February 3, 2025 in the amount of $349,680.89.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Old business, Business Discussion by Council vote on other action on status progress report of specific items. Facility manager?
I got to be sure I do that because my wife keeps yelling at me when I get home, your microphone wasn't on. Yeah, on the facilities manager, we, we've had a couple meetings with the Asset Management Commission and we have another one coming up. And they would like to have an opportunity to meet with the town council and to make a presentation. I need some guidance from the council in terms of how they would like that, would they want it in a workshop session, or would it just be better as just part of a presentation regular, regular council meeting? It's probably going to be about 15 to 20 minute presentation, all of which is what is an asset management program and what can we as a town benefit from. I wanted them to make sure that they did that presentation before we go to the next stage, which is to actually go out and do a, an RFP to bring someone in for a first phase. So I just need guidance from the council on this.
I mean, it'd probably be better just to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any, I'll, I'll work with the, with the clerk to make sure we put on an agenda that's not full.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Grants.
Yes, at the last meeting you had asked for a more visual presentation of grants. I spent more time than I thought I would have to going through what we already had and trying to figure out where things were.
Yeah.
That's been finalized, but I didn't finalize it in time to get into the agenda. So you will have that in your next meeting package and we will provide a, a, an update every council meeting on it.
Perfect. Madam President? Town administrator, what is the status on the current grant writers and their applications or their forms for the multi-generational grants?
The multi-generational grants are being handled by two different parties.
Okay.
As it relates to the congressional appropriations, the 4 million and 1 million, that's being handled by over 30 day agreement with Lisa and Doja. We did go to market, got three proposals and she was the most competitive proposal. She's also one of the procuring causes for one of those grants. We're also looking at CDBG money and C, G and G is working with us on the CDBG money. We're looking to apply, and they're just now starting the application process, we want to see if we can secure a grant to help underwrite some of the costs associated with the access road and infrastructure coming in. There's a maximum grant for that of half, half a million dollars. And we're looking at a second potential grant. And one of the things that we're possibly looking at is see if we can get some money for Scouter's Hall to kind of deal with some of the problems that they have there as it relates to the seals. So both those grant writers are engaged. We are currently finalizing the RFP and we hope to be, we'll come back to the council to review that with you and then hope to go to market for full-time grant writing services in the next 30 days.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Human resource position, I, administrator, I'm going to hand this over to you also.
Okay. We have been out advertising for the position, we have selected five candidates that we will be interviewing over the next two weeks. So we're feeling a little more confident right now that we're going to actually have somebody on board, hopefully in the next 30, 45 days. So keep our fingers crossed.
That's great news, thank you. Municipal Building Review Task Force, I don't have any further updates than the one we had last meeting. I'll be sure to get one for the next meeting because they were supposed to get the RFP going out. The next one is Discussion by Council vote on other action on resolution establishing the Hallowell Multi-Generational Building Committee, HMBC. So you have a copy of the resolution in your packet or the revised resolution? Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this?
I just had a problem with the, I'm, believe me, nobody wants a place for the seniors more than I do. Well, maybe Linda does. So, but I just have a problem approving something, voting for something, like putting it at Hallowell, put my name on something that we don't have the money to, we don't even have the money for it. So I spoke to the administrator about it, he alleviated my concerns a little bit, but I, maybe you could repeat to everybody else what you, what you mentioned to me because I'm just concerned that I'm about to approve something that we, we can't finish and I don't want to see that happen.
Yes, I make some comment on this and I think this is consistent with presentations that Mr. Porter has made to the town council previously on this. We understand that there is a gap here and we are committed to fill that gap through additional grant sources, but there will come a time during the process where we're going to have to do a gut check on the budget and depending on where we are on that, then they'll have to make a decision whether or not continue to go forward or we have to scale back a little bit. But that's consistent with what the presentations that Jeff made to the council during the whole approval process. So I'm comfortable with that and we'll work very closely with the committee and our, and the administration will work very closely with the committee, make sure that we don't get over our skis, but at the same time work very hard to raise the money that we need to fill the gap.
At some point, at some point in the process, could we be like, we might have to tap reserves or we, is something, could that happen? Like, could we end up in a position where like, listen, we either tap reserves or this thing's just not going to get completed?
I don't think that would happen unless we continue to commit to go full bore, full steam ahead for the whole thing and then just hope for the best coming back for the money. I think that gap can be managed and we'll be very, I think, I don't want to speak on behalf of Jeff, I think we'll be very transparent in that process and be very careful.
Thank you.
And I think too, as we move forward in the process with building for Hallowell, let's just be sure that we establish like a go, no-go period, right? So we can come to a point and say, at this juncture, we have 4 million and the 1 million, we've accrued more through grants, so we can do the tier three versus the tier one. So I think just as we start to plan for that, let's just establish at some point that we have a no, a go, no-go.
Yeah, but you have to keep in mind that million dollars can't be used on the building, that's just outside, recreational, right?
Yeah.
So we've got to make sure we keep that in mind, that it's, that million dollars is not for the building, so.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not for the building, but it is part of the total project cost. Those kinds of improvements would have to be made anyways. So it's not for the bricks and mortar, but still part of the site.
I have the same concerns. Does anyone have any comments about the, or any questions about the resolution in the packet? I actually have one. So line 76, it says council following a written recommendation, it says by, from, HMBC, it's not flowing correctly. So is it, should it just be recommendation by the, not to cross out the?
Recommendation by the HMBC.
Looks like it's intended to be from, yes.
Yeah, they cross out the from.
And the should stay.
I do.
Yeah.
And while you're right there, just below it, HMBD should be changed to HMBC.
I see that as well.
Oh, yeah, I see. And I think section one regarding membership could probably be a little bit clearer. I had to read it a few times in order to really understand what our total member count was in the delineation. So it says, "Membership of the HMBC shall consist of a total of 10 members, seven voting members, two of whom shall be alternate members, voting only in absence of a regular member. All voting members shall be residents," yes, "and then appointed by the town council, which is one sitting council member, then three professional staff members." So it sounds like it's a total of 10 members with, with five actual voting members, two alternates. Of the five voting members, one of those members is a town councillor. So we have four public voting members, one town council voting member, two alternate members, and then three professional staff members. I'm super impressed with myself in that math.
Vote in the absence of a voting member.
Right, no, I get that, but.
I think this, I think what happened with, originally this was supposed to be a five-member board and it got expanded to 10. By virtue of recommendations from the administration in an effort to include staff members. And the two alternates was a good suggestion though.
Oh, I don't disagree.
The two alternates was a good suggestion.
Yes, I do not disagree with the delineation here, I just think that the verbiage could be a little bit clearer because it tripped us up a little bit.
Well, we can, we can continue it and work on it again if you want.
No, I, I, I think, I think it's what I said, right? I think it's.
Yep, that's correct. It's, it's five, it's a five, it's five voting members, one of which is a council person, there's two alternates, and there's three staff members that are unmembers, have no voting power.
Okay, perfect.
So the way it's written is that the alternate members are part of the seven voting members, is what we're saying, right?
Yeah, it's just, right, exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Should the town council member be a voting member, is that normal? Or should they just be a liaison?
Absolutely, absolutely. This, this is a, this is a, you know, a committee.
Okay.
This is not a commission, this is a committee being created by the council and I think it's kind of important that the council have representation on this committee.
Okay.
And keep in mind too, that everything's, their advisory, everything's got to come back to the council.
Right, okay.
And the HRC, Hallowell Review Committee and Multi-Generational has seen this latest version and is, I'm getting one yes and one no.
Linda, you didn't see it? You were supposed to be part of the revision piece of it. That was the motion. So who, who worked on this revision?
This was done by the, this was done by the planner on behalf of the administration and I think, I, I think I forwarded comments from Mr. Porter to Mr. Carullo. Everything in red, everything, well, it's not red, but is it, it's, is yours red?
Blue. Blue.
Blue. Everything in blue, it was added by the administration.
And then to be fair, what's provided here or the revisions, the blue, it was previously discussed when we met, when they met during that joint meeting. So there's no net new language here, aside from just the, the membership number, but we discussed the membership number last we met. Am I recalling that correctly? If it wasn't last we met, it was at the joint meeting, so we established that that was the membership that all parties were comfortable with. So there's nothing, at least from what I can tell, there's nothing net new here that wasn't previously discussed.
No, it's not that it's new, it's just the two committees were supposed to work together to create or come to a conclusion on this, this resolution.
I think we worked together, or they did work together, I think the, the only dilemma is that the multi-generation didn't get to see the draft or the version that we could potentially, you know, move forward with.
May I?
Can you go, Linda, sorry?
Linda Tebow, 83 St. Paul Street, Chair of the Multi-Gen Committee. I, the only thing that I had said, that what we had recommended was exactly what you said, it was so much clearer. Five voting members, one of which would be a town council member, two alternates that would vote in the absence of the five voting members, and then three members that was recommended by the town administrator. So exactly what you said, that's exactly what was our motion that we had made and I think it was much clearer that way than seven voting members. But I bow to the solicitor to know it's the right way to go.
That's what it says, it is awkward, you know, AI might have cleaned it up a little bit if that option was selected, but it is.
No, I think it was perfectly clear.
The meat of it is there.
Five to vote, two alternates that would vote in the, in the absence of a voting member and then the three, you know, but yes, exactly what you said. And that's exactly what we made the motion, thank you.
Thank you. Section four, so the, the 1, 2, 3, and 4 breakouts, when it's saying through the professional staff, that's referring back to the administration staff? Okay. Anyone have any other questions or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution of the town council establishing the Hallowell Multi-Generational Building Committee, HMBC.
Second.
As.
As.
As revised.
Revised.
With the two type clerical changes.
Grammatical, with, as revised with the two grammatical changes, one being clarification of line 76, as written now, it says, "Written recommendation by, from, HMBC." That will be changed to recommendation from the HMBC. And line 77, the acronym HMBD will be modified to HMBC.
Okay, that's a motion and did you second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Moving forward, Discussion by Council vote on other action on resolution dissolving the Hallowell Review Committee, HRC. So you also have a resolution in your packet to dissolve the HRC since they're, they have completed its work and we are now moving on to the building committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution dissolving the Hallowell Review Committee.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just that possibly letters of appreciation be sent to everybody.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. And I just want to thank everyone for all the work they've done on it, I know it's been long, thank you. The next item is Discussion by Council vote on other action on resolution dissolving the Multi-Generational Advisory Committee, MAC. You also have a resolution to dissolve that committee.
May as well go three for three. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution dissolving the Multi-Generational Advisory Committee and send letters of appreciation to all of the members.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
And Linda, thank you, for your committee too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by Council vote on other action on appointments to town boards slash committees. The first one is the Hallowell Multi-Generational Building Committee.
Madam President, I am going to nominate Jeff Porter to the Hallowell Multi-Generational Building Committee.
Second.
For a voting seat.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Madam President? I would like to nominate Linda Tebow to the Hallowell Building Review Committee.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Just for clarification, that's for one of the voting seats?
For a voting seat, yes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Scott Savigny for a voting seat on the Hallowell Multi-Generational Building Committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Joanne Paulus to be a member, a voting member of the Hallowell Building Review Committee.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
Again, a voting seat?
Yep, I indicated that.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
So that's five, right?
That's four.
That's four.
We need a town councillor. Madam President, I would like to nominate David Punchak as the town councillor for the Hallowell Multi-Generational Building Committee.
I'll second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Assuming you want it. Okay.
Good. Thank you. Do I have a choice now?
You can get back out from last week. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Now for alternates, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Nigerian as the first alternate.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
For the second alternate, Madam President, I would like to nominate John Tagleone. We had two other applicants inclusive of John and based on his application, I think that he would be a great fit as an alternate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you second, Cliff?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Christopheraro?
Yes.[1778.54]
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
That's everyone, right?
Do we do a Richard Petrie?
No, we don't have enough seats.
Oh, okay.
All right, and the next appointments are to planning board.
Madam President?
Yes?
I would like to nominate Gary Pilati to fill the five-year position, which is a voting position that we have, indicates that we have one spot for that position.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Madam President, we have two alternate seats left. Ariana Ramos did request that she move from alternate two to alternate one. So I would like to nominate her for that move from two to one.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Douglas Ozier for the second alternate.
I would also like to, how do you want to do that? Because I want to make a nomination as well.
This gets so confusing. So we do two, and then we take a roll call? Is that what we do?
You can do that. This, you can, you can have, you can call for all nominations, and all the names can be made, and then you take a vote on the names and see who gets the votes. That's one way to do it.
All right, so take a call for all nominations. So I'd like to nominate Douglas Ozier for alternate two.
And I would like to nominate Corey Kraus for that alternate two position.
So there needs to be a second to each one of those nominations.
Well, is there a discussion first?
Well, after the second, then you have discussion. The second--
Can I second both of them?
Correct.
I'll second both of them.
So now both nominations on the floor. It's open for discussion.
The only thing I would like to add is that we're trying to bring people in to get more involved with the town, get people in to be, put in for committees. We have openings on committees. So we reach out, we're constantly low on volunteers for these committees. But we have an individual that's stepping up to be on the planning board, and he's applying for this committee. Doug Ozier is on two committees already. So are we going to deny one person to be sitting on a committee and give somebody who used to be a town counselor, we're going to, we're going to give, appoint somebody that used to be a town counselor to a third position before we give somebody the opportunity for one position? I think that would send a very bad message to the people. It just reeks of cronyism. I'm not saying that's what it is, but it's just, it's just a bad look, so.
How many, what committees does Doug on, aside from--
Doug is on asset management and the budget.
Okay, thank you.
I understand your point. My only question here is every question that was on the application was not filled out, so there's really no information about this individual, and we are, his planning experience would lie. Everything is not complete, so. So I, that's where I'm in a situation where someone who has planning experience versus someone who does not have planning. I mean, if maybe this was filled out and could convince me that they would be a good asset to the planning board, but nothing, everything's incomplete.
Well, if I may address that. Mr. Kraus is, he's been involved in the community for a long time. He's been, his wife is a teacher in our school system. Yeah, he might, he might, he has, he has to learn. I mean, but he's going to be second alternate. And I think he had, he definitely has to, he goes into this with a learning curve, probably that Mr. Ozier doesn't have. But at the same time, it's not rocket science, and I'm sure he's a very intelligent person. He's done very, very well with, in his career. He's been with Verizon for many years, and he's moved up the ladder to an important position over there. So I think he would fit in very well, and he would pick things up very quickly.
John?
No, I understand that he may be, there may be a little information missing. But again, do you want to put somebody on the, on the third committee before I put somebody on the first as a second alternate?
John, I definitely think that you have a valid point, that we do want our town constituents to apply for boards, to be on boards and commissions and to be involved. I've said this before regarding the planning and the zoning boards. These boards are incredibly, incredibly important, especially the planning board now, given the state ordinance changes. They're going to have more responsibility. I am more than happy to see new talent on these boards, but I think that we just, we need to ensure that we're staffing these boards with qualified individuals. And I'm not saying that this applicant is not necessarily qualified, but if we're looking at applications, comparing applications, Doug does have the qualifications and the experience in order to successfully be on that board from day one. If it were any other commission or committee, I would be open to new experience and maybe not necessarily having applicable experience, one-to-one experience. But with the planning and the zoning boards, I think that we just need to be very strategic in our appointments.
But some of these people, they got their experience once they got on a board. And if we have to maybe put it off and give Mr. Kraus and say, "Please fill this in." Maybe he didn't think it was important.
I know, but Claire, we waited. We did. We postponed appointments last time, right? Because John had said that he had an applicant. And I believe this wasn't the applicant--
It wasn't even the applicant, yeah.
Yeah, this was not the applicant that you initially proposed. And we've been advertising these roles since August. We can't hold off another week. I mean, another two weeks. These are the applicants, and we need to make the selection.
Okay. You say who, I'll vote, but I just want to bring that up.
Thank you.
A lot of you on the job, they, they get, you learn as you go on.
Yeah, but we just--
Sometimes experience, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Sometimes experience isn't, you know, shouldn't be the deciding factor, because sometimes experience is not necessarily a good thing. I have found Mr. Ozier, we have some big things coming up in the town. If you remember, Mr. Pilati was talking when he was here discussing about staying on. He says he was excited about continuing on the planning board because there would be great opportunities with development of 146 and other things that are going to be happening in the town in the coming years. I find Mr. Ozier, although intelligent, and he does care about the town, I do find him not to be the most business-friendly individual that we, maybe we want to have on the, on the planning board. I think Mr. Kraus would be a better foot, a better fit for what we, the town has, for the town's long-term plans.
I'd also just like to set the record straight that Doug is not on the Asset Management Commission.
What's the two committees, two other committees?
He's only on the Budget Committee.
There's not--
He, he, he's only on the Budget Committee. He was interested in the Charter Review Committee.
He's not on asset?
No. He's not on the Asset Management Commission, no. We have a vacancy.
I just think we just, we just changed the ordinance so that, we got rid of the terms because we wanted to keep the experience because it was so needed for that board, so. So I don't know, I just think we need someone who has the experience.
I think you're throwing away a possibility of having a very good person on the board. They're only the second alternate. There's not a very good, it won't be a voting member. In the meantime, they'll be able to learn a great deal about the committee and the responsibilities of the committee. He's proven himself in his career. He's been at Verizon, I think, for 27 or some, 27, 23 years or 27 years? Anyway, he's been there for a very long time. He's moved up the ladder, very high up the ladder. And this is somebody that, you know, that I think that we should put-- I don't even know why I'm arguing you guys are going to vote, what you want to vote for. Just like last week.
All right, any other discussion? So we do--
You would call, the way we just organized it, you would call the vote by name.
Okay.
And whoever's got the most votes by name is elected.
Okay. All right, so we'll do, vote for Corey Kraus.
Well, doesn't she just do roll call?
That's what I'm saying. You do roll--
Oh, and you just call the name now?
And announce the name that you're going to vote for.
Okay. All right, so we have it. We have Corey Kraus and DJ Ozier.
Nations on the floor, one for Corey Kraus and one for Douglas Ozier.
Yep.
When the vote, when the roll call is called, you announce the name that you vote for.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Corey Kraus.
Ms. Cristofaro?
Douglas Ozier.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Mr. Kraus.
Mr. Punchak?
Douglas Ozier.
Ms. Howes?
Doug Ozier.
Discussion by council vote or other action on consideration of memorandum of understanding for the Nosma Field Fire Department contract for FY 2025, Chief Shadier.
Good evening. What you have in front of you tonight is a proposed memorandum of agreement that the solicitor and I and the town administrator worked on. Basically, what it is, is just to reflect what our current contract has changed to since the new funding that you approved for this fiscal year, and that was the addition of two personnel, and that was half of the year's salary. So now what that does is that increases the supplemental funding that we were getting from $432,000 for the fiscal year to $540,000. And that also increases the staffing number from 27 to 29. So basically, what it does is just, it's keeping the contract consistent to what we're actually doing.
Anyone have any questions on this? Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
And authorize the administrator to execute.
Correct. And authorize the administrator to execute.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote or other action on abatements slash supplementals, Ms. St. George.
Hello.
Hi.
So first I have abatements in the amount of $3,653.77.
So I just have a question. What does the second line, it says SFD, what does that mean?
Single-family dwelling.
Oh, okay, thank you. That's probably something you use in your--
Sorry.
Every day, right? Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? I'd like, go ahead. Sorry.
No, 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 it's okay, Madam President. It just came to mind. It says over-assessed value untangibles for the Great Road 102, 594 Great Road 102. What, what were those, what were those tangibles? Are you able to tell us what those tangibles were?
I can't give you exactly what, like, specifics because tangible, like, assets are private for each business.
Okay.
I can tell you-- Hold on one second.
But is it safe to assume that it was the same tangible year-over-year? Because we have one for 2024, one for 2023, line item.
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, what happened was they came in for a meeting because for some reason, year after year, something was on their, on their asset list that they either got rid of and never told us, and the assessor never removed it. So they continued to get taxed on it. So I just adjusted just two years, '24 and '23.
This might be a stupid question, John, but how can we necessarily prove that they didn't have that over the course of two years? Or just taking their word that they didn't have that tangible?
Yeah. Tangibles are, most of it is based on honesty and their word that they have that equipment in the business. We did sit down and we went over everything. And the only reason I'm approving the last two years is because they filed the annual return, and on that annual return, it was not listed on there.
Okay, so you compared it, too?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Is the motion to approve abatements and supplementals, do we need to go over the supplementals as well?
It's just for abatements.
Just--
And then I do--
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm just looking up the business name, that's all, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Just abatements we're approving right now.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the abatements. Do I have to specify?
In the amount.
Oh, yeah. In the amount of $3,653.77.
That's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Next, I have supplementals in the amount of $2,652.56.
All right, anyone have any questions on these supplemental taxes?
What is a tax stab?
Is that stabilization?
Stabilization tax stamp.
Wow, look at that. Anyone else?
No, I, just, on the page of abatements in the bottom-left corner, there's two numbers, pending approval. What do those mean? Like, what are those for? Is that stuff you're still working on?
No.
Like, there's a, there's a pending approval of abatements of $31,000, a supplement of $265,000. Are we still trying to collect that additional $265,000?
No. So a few years back, Mrs. Howes asked me to put down for the fiscal year how much we have used, because we put so much aside for abatements each year. So that just shows you, it means pending because pending your approval for tonight's abatements and supplementals, that would be the total amount.
Oh, all right.
So, um, it just shows you how many, how, the total amount of abatements I've done from July 24 to today.
And then how many supplements have potentially been collected or have been assessed anyway?
Yes, should be collected.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone like to make a motion to approve the supplemental?
I'll make that motion to approve the supplemental.
Second.
In the amount of--
$2652.56.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last item is open forum pursuant to 42-46-6D, maximum three minutes per person. Would either of you like to speak tonight? No?
The last.
Thank you, Linda. Leanne, did you want to speak?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so there's no one that would like to speak in open forums. So the last one is executive session, closed session, discussion by council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42-46-5A5. Any discussion or considerations related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes or of the disposition of publicly held property wherein advanced public information would be detrimental to the interests of the public, one potential acquisition of land? Yes.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Ms. Cristofaro?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.